Five seconds.
Yeah.
Four, three, two, one, go. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our city council work session for October 2nd. Ms. Manager, we've got some people from out of town working on the aquatics. If you're okay with it, maybe we could do that one first.
Yeah, that's fine. That's perfectly fine.
All right, let's get going.
Good morning, Mary County, members of the Des Moines City Council. I'm Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director. Thanks for letting us move up our consultant from Kansas City. We'll go briefly here. I want to tell you, over the last year, we've been looking at our pools. And I'm talking about the five pools, Nahas, Northwest, Teach Out, Ashworth, and Burland. Just these five for this presentation. What a great weekend to come off of to talk about pools as we hit 90 degrees here on October 1st, and would have been real busy. I want to thank a small group behind the scenes, including our consultant from Waters Edge. But first, we had our Parks and Rec team, of course, because the park side of the operation maintains the pools. The recreation side staffs them and programs them. But it also takes multiple city departments. When you do something like this, it takes not only the city manager's office, it takes city finance to help us with some of the calculations you're going to see. It takes city facilities. They have the plumbers, electricians, those folks that help us make these pools so nice and vibrant. And it also takes the engineer's office, because we have vertical infrastructure. We have bathhouses, we have pump buildings, those type of things. So this is truly the result of a lot of city staff working together. And I'd tell you this, I've been here since 2007. We've done a great job with your help financing a lot of things in the park system. We've caught up on park systems like playgrounds, shelters. We've caught up on the trail system. We've built those great sports complexes. But the one thing we really haven't touched, since I've been here, without just minor maintenance like painting and minor repairs, is these five pools. So you're about to see the last big lift, I think, of our department when it comes to needed infrastructure and a heavy lift. I want to tell you about one more thing. I want to thank you why we're here today. Last year, this council supported extra wages. And we are one of the large to Midwest cities, or mid-sized cities across the nation. I'm on a call once a month with all the directors from the capital cities in this nation. We are one of very few cities that were fully staffed. Our attendance records show that this year, because we broke pre-pandemic records of use of those pools. But I want to thank you, because without your help and having those extra wages, we weren't going to be able to recruit those folks. I want to point out two people today. Daniel Calvert, he led this with our big city team. I also want to point out Ian behind the scenes. Ian Connions would be the first to tell you. He runs our pools. He is the one that deserves the credit for being fully staffed, having a great summer, having over 120,000 people not only come to the pools but go home safely. So I want to point out Ian too for being here today. Lastly, you're going to see a lot of pictures that don't do this justice, without being able to get to the back of the pump house rooms and see things. So I brought you a couple of visuals you can pass out. I want you to see these. This is just one thing. You think of pools, we've got pumps, we've got plumbing lines, we've got filters, we've got heaters, lots of expensive infrastructure. And so what we brought you today, and I'll pass, there's two of these. You can maybe pass those down. Oh, one for a second. This is what happens once a week. This is the rust from the plumbing lines. This is one pool, but all the pools have the same issue. So you think about your home furnace has a filter. When we have the water, and the water has to be cleaned every hour on the hour, when the public leaves at night, we turn that off. We turn it reverse. We can clean that front of that filter where all that rust comes. This is one quarter off of one pump, off of one pool, off of one week. So we do have some issues that we need to take care of, or we need to decide what the future of our pools is. So without further ado, I want to introduce our consultant, Jeff Bartley from Waters Edge. He'll walk you through a really good presentation. Take your questions at any time at the end, or whatever you want to do. Just stop us and we'll answer questions. What I would say is a ticking time bomb waiting to happen. So today, I'll give you an example. We lost the filtration system at the Burland, what we call the baby pool. You've been to Burland, there's a small pool, really small depth of water, separate from the big basin pool. That stopped this year. Unlike a lot of things, like I was talking with the media over the weekend when they were interested, we don't get to go to Home Depot or Menards. We have to engineer those type of things. There are just one-size-fits-all filtration and pump systems. So we have to go several months at a time and bid those things and then have them installed.
How many, because I know the pools were closed from time to time because of maintenance issues. And these were unscheduled. I mean, do you know how many days we had pools down for the course of summer?
Did we track that? I don't. We did track all the maintenance through work orders. So through city facilities, we know what, how many times we send an electrician and plumber, those type of work orders. So it was a few days, but overall, we were mostly open. We didn't have a weather closure this year, I know that, or a staffing closure, but we did have a couple of mechanical closures this year. I'll get those numbers to you, though. These five pools.
All right, let's get rolling.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Bartley. I represent Waters Edge Aquatic Design. It's a engineering firm that specializes in planning and design of swimming pools and aquatic centers across country. I am one of the co-founders and a principal engineer with that firm. And I conducted, our company conducted, the study for you over the past year. And I really appreciate, I do want to take the time to say I really appreciate each and every one of your staff members. I think you have quality staff that are caretaking these facilities. And it's evident in their day-to-day approach to that. And I've really enjoyed collaborating with them. So this study is a collaboration with your staff to bring forward these recommendations to you. So with that, the first bolted list includes the objectives of the study. As we undertook this past year, one was to conduct site reviews of each of the facilities. And we did that while the pools were operating in season and also when they, off-season, when they were empty, to see the basins and the structures themselves without water. We developed a variety of scenarios and tiers of improvements to consider. And then with that, we put estimated cost to each one of those scenarios and then address the impact of those options on your operations. So with that, here are your five, and we're talking today about the five large outdoor swim facilities. Those include Northwest, Burland, Ashworth, Teach Out, and Nahas. And you see those in this map overlaid in the Des Moines metro area. And we also have pinpointed other significant aquatic centers in adjacent communities. So you can see where these facilities are spread across the city and also where they are relative to other competing aquatic centers. But in addition to your five large outdoor pools, you've committed to neighborhood facilities to serve the community. And those include spray grounds, splash pools, and waiting pools. And you can see, when you add those to the map, it provides a significant additional coverage to your entire, your entire community, serving each of those local communities. So that's what this map shows, including the, I put in the kind of the gray boxes. Those are the large outdoor facilities highlighted. There are, I believe, there are a number of waiting pools left that are kind of older in the system. And those are, how many were those? Three, three waiting pools left to be converted to splash pads or spray grounds. This slide shows those five facilities in proximity to each other. And I've overlaid a two-mile service radius on those. And you can see you have pretty good coverage for those facilities within that. It tells me that they, in their location, they serve your community pretty well without having to travel a significant distance to those. The exception to that might be Nahas, which is in the southern area. And it tells me that Nahas potentially covers a larger geographic area than the, especially the three on the north side. On the left-hand side of that, those are the attendance figures. We had been working mostly through the study with 2022 data, including attendance and your financial records. And in 2022, your attendance was approximately 69,000 visits. And those were open rec swim visits, which were tracked for each pool, plus daycares were tracked separately. And that adds up to your 69,000. And of course, in 2022, coming off of COVID difficulty finding lifeguards and having inability to staff all five pools at the same time, that's why you had four of the pools operating at one time with one off cycle each day through 2022. So that attendance includes operating four at a time. 2023, commend, of course, commend Ian and his efforts, but you were able to staff up and get lifeguards to operate all five facilities for this past summer. And the attendance increased quite a bit from that. So the financial data I looked at was from 2022. The overall expenses, operating expenses were approximately 1.2 million with revenue at 426,000. That leaves what we track as a cost recovery of revenue to expense of 34%. That's a little bit on the light end. We'd like to see that higher, although we acknowledge that, as I understand, the council's committed to providing accessible and affordable options for your community, which with your attendance leaves slightly less revenue to offset those expenses. But, and then on the expense side, we track a ratio of dollars per square foot of water. And it's just under 25, which we believe is in a fairly typical range for these size facilities. And then more statistics, down at the bottom, you try to hire approximately 125 lifeguards each season, which is a significant number, with 50 to 60 of those lifeguards being on, at a facility during one rotation. So with the five, they're not all the same. We have what we consider two different generations. Ashworth and Burland are older, slightly older than the remaining three. And a few common characteristics, those two each have a focus on traditional swimming features like lap lanes. Each has a 50-meter lap lanes. They have a separate diving basin. So focus on swimming and deep water with a waiting pool off to the side. They were built in the 1980s, and they were originally constructed prior to any current ADA standards. One difference between the two, Ashworth did receive new filters in 2009, where Burland is still operating on a pretty old filter system. Although Burland also received a waterslide in the mid-1990s. So the other three, those are more characterized as aquatic centers, family aquatic centers. They each have a more focus on shallow water, family-friendly areas, like the broad sweeping zero-deep entry. You see it each one, a handful of lap lanes, maybe roughly four lap lanes each facility. And newer bathhouses, and they were each a little more ADA-friendly than the previous two. So as far as conditions go, we, as I said before, we did an onsite conditions assessment for each of the five. And again, as you imagine, with the two generations, they have some commonalities between them. With the two older ones, with those structures being 40 years old, they're a little bit older. They have, that means that they each have a stainless steel gutter, which has a 40-years wear and tear on it, which we think is nearing the end of the life expectancy for those gutters. And then the buildings each, they're in fair condition, but they each need some, some more. Let's see. So here are, these are some photos of Ashworth Pool. And you can see on the top left, that's the filter that was replaced in 2009. So it has a slightly newer filter system. The pictures on the right show pictures of the pool basin itself, empty. And it has a handful of shrinkage cracks and areas that were patched. But yet, we feel like that structure is in reasonable condition and has considerable, considerable remaining life left to it. There is some other work that needs to be done along the site. There's a retaining wall along it that is starting to fall in places that needs some repair. For Burland, again, I'll say I commend your maintenance staff. Does a fantastic job. That picture in the middle, top middle, with the gentleman standing next to it, that is your waiting pool filter that failed this summer. If you look at it from a photo outside, it actually looks pretty good, because your maintenance staff keeps it cleaned up and painted. But those kind of things tend to corrode from the inside out. And the same goes for the, you see the happy face on the bottom. Your, that filter and the one on the top left is the main filter for Burland. And it's the one that's disintegrating as we speak. I think it has very little remaining life. And I suspect that the jar of rust that Ben gave you, I suspect that's coming from that large filter. Oh, that's from Teach Out, okay. Well, that's the kind of stuff you would be finding from that filter as well. So some common conditions for the other three, the aquatic centers, 30 years old, slightly less in age. Of the three, Nahas is in the best physical condition, with Northwest being in the worst. But all in all, still in fair physical condition with lots of remaining life left in it. They each have stainless steel gutters that each of them needs repair. But at this point, we don't believe they need replaced. So a few individual distinctions. Nahas has a large, has a waterslide pair with a separate plunge pool. And there's quite a bit of gray change. So it has a stair structure and a ramp down to it that's wooden. And that's aged and worn over time. And it's a constant maintenance headache for your staff. So that should be replaced. And the filter system needs to be replaced on it as well. Northwest, as I mentioned, there was quite a bit concerned. It got painted just prior to the summer. And staff is really concerned about some of the patching that had to be done prior to painting. But we had cores taken from it. And those cores showed that the structure overall is in pretty good shape. Those repair areas seem to be more in an isolated areas. Teach Out did also receive newer slides since the 90s. But unfortunately, those slides are in poorer condition and need some reconditioning. So here are some photos of each individual facility. This is Nahas. The top left is the waterslide complex. And then the top, kind of the bottom right, is that platform with the wooden structure. And that needs replaced. And then some more pictures, the ones on the top right include kind of that filter plant area down in the basement where the filters are operating. Northwest, this is the one I mentioned, was repainted this, prior to this summer season. You can see the gray areas on that where there is, had to be patched prior to painting. Teach Out, Teach Out actually got a kind of a touch-up paint prior to this summer, but it's slated to be repainted at the end of this year. But all in all, each of them has pretty similar conditions with gutters that need to be reconditioned. And then some of them have, at least two of them have pool decks that need to be redone. Pool decks are in poorer condition. So we're recommending that the pool deck be replaced. And in that process, replace any piping that's located under that pool deck. So we've, so seeing all this, doing the physical, the inspection of the physical condition, we've put together a list of repairs that we believe need to be done at each of the five facilities. And this table totals up those repairs at each facility. And you can see on the right-hand column, that's the total number, total amount for each of them. And we're estimating it at approximately $10.8 million in repair work that should be done at each of the five pools. And that is to extend the life of these facilities another 20 years and also prevent any interruptions in the pool operation or service. We also took, out of that total list, we peeled back a list of those things that we think are more immediate, that should be done in the next two to three years, so that the operation isn't interrupted, such as filters that are about to fail, those kind of things. And that list totals up to be about 1.8 million. And as you can see from this list, you would expect Ashworth and Burland are two large facilities and older, and are older facilities. So they require a little more cost for repair than, say, the three newer aquatic centers. Of the three newer ones, Northwest and Teach Out are a higher repair cost. And that's primarily from pool deck. We're recommending pool deck be replaced along with the piping underneath that compared, as compared to Nahas. So here's a list. I won't go through the list, but the list of immediate repairs we're recommending. And the lion's share of that is going to Burland, which has the large filter systems that are in dire need of replacement, followed by Nahas, which has a filter system for the slides that need to be replaced. Northwest has gotten a lot of attention recently. And most of those immediate items have either been addressed or those things are already being procured by your facilities department. So we're taking a very proactive approach on attacking some of these issues. Even as we're analyzing those and presenting them to your staff, they're trying to address them as they can. So that leaves the remaining critical repairs. And this is the list of those, again, Ashworth and Burland needing significantly more work done than the remaining three. And then Northwest and Teach Out, also some repair, but with the deck and the piping.
Is that a, like a five-year budget, or is that immediate?
The immediate budget, we've identified as the 1.8 million. And again, that's an ongoing thing. We're constantly working with your staff to identify which ones are really dire and critical need. And even within this list, we're trying to establish a priority of what needs to be tackled first versus other things. But this, my intention is this list is in the next, next two, three years.
So we had a great discussion on that, Councilmember Gatto, with the city manager present and our city finance team. The goal is to take the immediate list here of 1.8 and see if we can get that between three and four, five years. And then take the next level, which is the critical two, to get those in the next five, seven, eight, nine years, right? We're going to do our best, like you've heard with the great maintenance staff that we have, to continue to extend the life on anything we can to make this be as small as a budget impact as possible, with knowing one thing, as a team, the council and us working together, that if something goes, it goes. But we'll do our best to extend the life on it. And we'll just do what the consultant says, is fix these ones that are most urgent now and hope, cross your fingers, and maintain things like you have been doing. And hopefully, they keep going.
So can most of these repairs be done in the off-season without disruption, without major disruption to the pool season?
We're actually working through that right now as we speak. So there's a couple of ways to look at that. There's one, since we're lucky, we're not small-town Iowa, we only have one pool. Since we do have five pools, you could look at it one of two ways, Councilmember Voss. Is take one and get one closed down, because you'll get better bids probably. Because what I've noticed in my time in Des Moines, we give more time to work. They can do more things. They're not rushed. They're not going to charge us more. But you should be able to do a lot of things that are pumps and piping during the non-season. What you run into is the concrete work, it's got to be done during the warmer part of the weather. So it's a possibility, but I don't want to overcommit until we have more study and more direction from you on which way you want us to go.
Well, to Carl's question, I mean, as you go back to the maps where everything is, there's one specific ward that doesn't have a pool, and that would be mine. And so if you shut down Nahas during the season, that would pretty much cut off everyone south of the river of having any type of, being able to use this facility. So I would hope that one specifically would be done in the off-season.
And you had some good news there, too, if you've been listening. One of the themes, Nahas, for whatever reason, they're all maintained the same way. That one's just held up more, so it has less problems. So I think there would be a good opportunity for us to do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's the budget answer. I'll let Jeff take on the rest of the presentation.
Okay, come back to our was. Okay, any more questions on physical condition or repair work that should be done? Okay, so then, overall master planning and thinking of overall strategies. I know that your department and the city has done public engagement, some work prior to our involvement. Additionally, park staff surveyed 2023 season ticket holders across the community and asked a question, would you prefer to keep the five facilities remain, primarily as is, with some renovation or improvement? Or would you consider scaling back or replacing, doing maybe fewer of those, but have them be all new? And the vast majority of the season ticket holders prefer to keep your five facilities as is in their location. So that's a sentiment with the community. We do believe that the pools in their location provides pretty good service to the community. And there's an opportunity to sustain those five moving forward. We do think that there ought to be a plan in place to reduce those emergency repairs and those surprise interruptions to the, to the pools being open. And then each of those, there's an opportunity to enhance those, to improve the guest experience. And then also, that would result in improving attendance and increase revenue that you receive at those facilities to offset those expenses. So with that, those are the, those are kind of the recommended improvements we have, or a recommended plan. And again, by providing those enhancements, you can provide a new experience for the guests. You can increase the attendance. You can increase your revenue and help your bottom line. And you can provide a new experience for that community. So with those options, we did study a number of scenarios. And they ranged anywhere from $11 million just to do basic repairs, all the way up to more than $50 million for more significant enhancements and additions to those facilities. So we looked at a wide range of options. The one we brought forward is this one, which includes, again, those immediate and critical repairs, basic repairs to extend the life, and then, and then an amount of enhancements to each of those facilities to improve that, those conditions there. And you can see in that, the middle column, that is the budget for enhancements. It totals up to be roughly 5.6 million on top of the previous budget. So a total, total opinion cost or capital cost of about 16.5 million for the repairs plus the enhancements. So in contrast, to compare that with, if you were to replace those pools, structures, and amenities, it's close to, our opinion is close to $56 million price tag. So we do believe you get good value by repairing your existing pools and adding enhancements to it. So with that, here's a list of kind of those recommended enhancements. Each of the five facilities will get, should get some amenities that improve the guest comfort, such as shade and lounge, better lounge areas, maybe pool deck. We've talked about cooling down the deck in certain areas, things that make it more comfortable for your users. And then some of them, many of the facilities get some revised or new amenities. At Northwest, we're recommending a wet deck with spray features on that for Nahas. Larger wet deck structure with a play structure on it and new waterslides. For Burland, we're actually recommending replacing the waiting pool and replacing it with a larger wet playground area to serve the kids. And at Teach Out, we're recommending some, some other areas, synthetic turf areas and some more shade and things that we could focus on. Teach Out, where it can be programmed for, say, night use or teen events or things at night. And that's primarily due to its location. It's in a more commercial setting and less connected directly to residential areas where those kind of programs would be intrusive to the neighbors. And then at Ashworth, continue to focus Ashworth on the programs, the neighborhood it serves, but also the distinct programs that it offers in that area. Ashworth also, we have improvements to, it's one of the older buildings. So there are improvements to, to improve that area, provide better accessibility from the parking lot. lot and access in, along with better bathroom, private changing rooms and things like that. So here are just some representative images. So each of the pools, again, shade, better lounge areas. That's a representative photo of a synthetic turf berm that we're recommending at Teach Out. The left one represents a wet deck structure that we suggest for Nahas. And then the right would be Northwest and Birdland, so the splash pad area or wet playground area. And then Nahas, new water slides. So with that, that's our recommendations. Questions that you have?
Any questions, anybody?
One question I noticed, and in in one of the earlier slides, the pools didn't have as many swim teams, water polo and other events this season. Is there a reason for that?
It was given to us after we had to submit, just those folks are all volunteer groups, so the numbers did go up just as much as 2022. If you notice, too, the the attendance number said 109, I told you 122 at the beginning of my comment, number of people that came and went home safe. That's our new number, we just had to update it after we submitted this document, so.
Okay, and also, the suburban, well, I don't even, they're probably called aquatic centers and not pools. There's there's a lot going on there that's not swimming related. Are we in the right position just to keep down the track that we have now that these are mostly swimming pools and not trying to to be something they aren't? I'll take Clive's aquatic center as an example.
I think that you could use the terminology either or, but right now, we've always called the two big basin pools, pools, Birdland and Ashworth, and the the three others, Teach Out, Nahas and Northwest and Aquatic Center, because in the 90s, I wasn't here, but some of you were, you decided to make them aquatic centers by going to the zero depth and making those investments and going with this water slide. So what we're seeing today is, I'll give the example again, the the Birdland baby pool, it's even when it was operational, didn't use, see a lot of use, just isn't maybe as fun with what's all out there today in the suburbs as well as our pools have. We have very nice pools. So maybe that's the best idea is instead of we start fixing filters for that baby pool, maybe we put in that little spray grounds right inside the fence right there, so there is options for little kids, because that is a deep well pool, there is no zero depth. That's why I like this plan, it has thought about just about every angle here to keep us vibrant, and it does what the public's been asking us. That's the second time we've asked that question in the last five years about, would you like to have these examples you see in the suburbs, or would you like our pools? Both times it's come back 85% keep our pools where they are in our neighborhoods, mostly like they are, but make sure they have some features that are fun. That answer?
I have heard from quite a few people over the last few weeks about the pools, and overwhelmingly the people that I've talked to prefer having our swimming pools in the neighborhoods. It serves a purpose, neighborhood kids can use it, you know, anyone can use it, it's easy to get to. So I really like this idea of making these enhancements. Shout out to your team because you guys have done a great job with our pools over the last few years, and you know, you're you're getting by on a shoestring. So I really hope that we can give some, put some additional funding into our pools so we can get these enhancements done.
I would agree, too. That's what I've heard, I think, having them in the neighborhoods, and when you see the numbers, and probably could use one down on the southeast side. But I think the spray grounds and doing that and get rid of all the waiting pools as fast as we can, I think the kids like them better, and it's safer.
And because of your your last ARPA allocation, we've already started the public input processes for the last three waiting pools over the winter, that will be done. We're working with our colleagues in engineering over the late winter and bidding out hopefully about a year from now to get rid of those last three.
Great job.
I have a couple of questions. One, how do how does the length of our season compare to other places? Because I know, I mean, I think we're shut shut down our pools a little earlier than other communities in the in the metro and in the area. Is there what is that just a budget constraint? Is that a maintenance constraint? What what is that? And and if we were open longer, would would there would there be, would that impact some of what we saw from a cost or maintenance perspective?
I think it's to have both of those, so I'll go off of my 16 years here. We've always had a typically Memorial Day through Labor Day season. However, one pool opens up Memorial Day only because of staffing and the access to the kids. First, most of the kids are working for us, our kids, we have very few adults, and they're still in school and school activities. And so we can get one pool guaranteed. We've tried in the past, it just didn't work out, and then we have expectations that folks are upset with. Same thing on the opposite end of the summer, Labor Day, we try to make it just one pool through Labor Day, we close the others right when school starts up, they start up before Labor Day. And so that's been one of the issues, too. And when the college kids go back even before local high schools start, we could try to extend it a season, and we've done that, we just close down during the week, and we open those weekends only, that's when we see some use. And then also the weather, it just seems like once in a while, we close when it's really super hot out, and then when we stay open, it gets really cold. But I think we could try anything, and and the budget really for one more weekend at a time is is probably within the current resources we have, because you are going to have so many rain days of the year that you're probably going to catch up a couple of days, we could have those weekends built back in.
I mean, it's a piece of feedback I got.
Yep, absolutely.
And maybe it was because it was particularly hot this year. So folks were were looking for the pool during
Absolutely.
During those times. And I'm just curious, too, the other the other piece, I mean, you explained why why we do it. Are we sort of the outlier? Because I know other communities are probably pulling from the same same thing, right? I assume other folks are using their high school kids and college kids to staff their pools.
Yes, they are. And there's there'll be the two examples I could have, it has more than one pool, it would be my top of my head, West Des Moines and Ankeny, they have two pools, so they go down to one as well. Ian, I'll have to pull you out of the spot, do you know the answer to that, if the other cities are going longer than us, do you know?
If they are, so I've worked over in, yes, I'm sorry, my name's Ian Newton, I'm the aquatic supervisor for the city. In my experience, just working at different pools, Altoona, Ingrinnell, they might be able to extend the season, but ultimately, they still shut down around the end of August, and they they deal with the same struggles that we do with, working with staffing and high school athletics and Iowa State Fair. Typically, though, we would see amenities shutting down, so maybe not slides or certain areas of the pools being closed. So there's there's a way to overcome it, but it's just that it's you'll you'll lose one thing to just keep open, if that makes sense.
The spray grounds are all.
And I might and I might add, from kind of a larger, broader perspective, that's that's kind of a national trend, is that it becomes a challenge for a lot of communities to keep facilities open later towards Labor Day. And those communities that have multiple pools, it's very common for those to to focus on keeping one of those open when some of the other ones get shut down. Whereas if your community only has one facility, you keep that one, you keep that one open.
One more last piece of information might be interesting, too, is when we did the Department of Justice audit of the whole city, I think the mayor remembers this best, about 2008, one of the things that came out of that is Birdland and Ashworth aren't eligible for the early open or the late open, stay open, because they're not AD accessible, they don't have the zero depth entry, so we get only one of the three pools early and late.
And then I noticed, this was in the numbers early on, the number of daycare or child childcare admissions, yes, in 2022 was a lot higher than in 2023. What what explains that? And is is that something that?
Those are the numbers that we were still getting in after we hit print and had to serve this to the city clerk's office today. We were just chasing them down, so those are almost equal to what you would have saw in 2022.
Okay, so the childcare was back up.
Yeah, and swim teams, there was a number of both of those that just couldn't get a third information in time for our report. Yeah.
Okay.
I asked the same question, and that's what Ian wants to do with me, so. Anything else?
Let's stay available. Is there anybody in the audience? I got some calls that maybe there were some citizens want to make a couple of comments, If you do come up.
This is going to make me nervous. So my name's Ethan Johnston, I've been a proud Southside resident for most of my life. First swim team I ever swam on was at South Town Pool, which is now Nahas. My parents actually started the Des Moines Aquatics Club, one of 10 families. We've been swimming at Birdland since 1981, hosted a swim meet there, the Birdland Invite since 1983, this was our 40th annual. So we rely on these city pools. I'm the head coach of the Des Moines Swim Federation also. So I think for us, this plan looks great, keeping the pools the way they are. And Des Moines is in a unique position as opposed to the, I think, Councilman Voss brought up, the the suburban pools. We actually bring kids in from the suburbs, because we have something that the that the suburbs don't have, is we have two 50 meter pools, which is a big deal. Our kids need to train in 50 meter pools. We actually have one of two Olympic trials qualifiers on our team in the state of Iowa because we get to use the 50 50 meter pools. The season is short, but that's more the nature of the weather in Iowa. And staffing is a concern. I was the head coach at Roosevelt High School for four years, too. And as Ian knows, we send a lot of, I think, a large percentage of the lifeguards that work at the city pools come from our Roosevelt swim teams. And we do help with at Roosevelt with training, giving the Des Moines pools a place to train their lifeguards, too. So I actually just talked to Ian a little bit ago about that. But we love, and I think our only concern is something that was brought up about keeping the facilities open when they're supposed to be open. And this is probably somewhat for my livelihood, but it's important to us that Birdland's open during the season, and I know Birdland needs a lot of repairs, I've been there for many years, it needs a lot of repairs. I've seen that filter room, I've seen the rust in the filter room. But it is important to the swim teams that they have, that they're open during those seasons. And I've coached for Central Iowa Aquatics, I coached Des Moines Aquatic Club or Des Moines Swim Federation, I've played on the Des Moines Water Polo Club, I have a cool little plaque out in my car that got recognition for use of the city pools and water safety. So from a competitive swimming standpoint, I think this is great, and we are one of the two teams, well, there might be three or four teams that use the Des Moines pools, and we're we're in favor of this plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time and presentation, let's keep it moving forward. Just remembering to Councilman Gatto's point that there doesn't seem to be a lot of pools in Ward Four. Remember in the the early, late 90s and early 2000s, when we were doing all the planning down around Easter Lake, there was going to be a pool and a park and actually a school down there as well.
Library.
And and a library. And so didn't happen, but maybe at some moment in.
The land is still there.
Do we still have the land?
The land's still there.
Yeah, it's at the corner of the Harvey Post and Indianella Road, Southeast School Park Combo Site, just sitting there, and today we lease it to a farmer until we decide what the city wants to do and what it's funded.
Opportunity.
All right.
And we are building a new pool, as we all know, at the indoor, the city's first indoor pool will get built in the next year and a half at the Rycart Community Recreation Center, so one more pool comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, should we move ahead and let's go to the Violence Interruption Project and get an update?
So this is our annual update. We asked Ivette Tim Akio to come on in and.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, everyone. While our presentation is being queued up, we just want to thank you all for selecting creative visions to address gun violence in this community. We've been doing this now, going on 28 years, and we want to commend the city for being the first organization to invest and dedicate a real commitment to nonprofits to address gun violence and reduce criminal behavior in our community. So thank you, Tim.
Well, this is our overview of our Creative Visions Violence Intervention Program, excuse We'll start with our team, of course, me, Tim McCoy, the program manager. Our other employee would be Victor Caldwell, he's a Violence Interrupter Outreach Worker. We have Calveta Harris, who is also a Violence Interrupter Outreach Worker. We have Malik, who is a Violence Interrupter Freelancer, and of course, Ivette Mohammed, who is the director. This was an interesting quote that came from Walt Disney, really, really impacted me, because it kind of fits our program. The way to get started is to quit talking and begin doing. The focus of our program is, one, to reduce gun violence, restore value in human life, create the new pool, which is very, very important, changing community norms and mindsets, and put the neighbor back in the hood. We're trying to get from here, which is a place that induces constant violence, unhealthy behavior and survival. So to do so, we've actually broke down our targeted area in four different zones, Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three and Zone Four. Zone One had 26 days of free shoot, free of shooting in our shooting streaks. Zone Two had 259. Zone Three had 65 days, and Zone Four, our largest running streak was 495 days. Here's the graph that actually entails from before we implemented our program, and that would have been in 2021, there was 11 shootings in our target area that resorted, that resulted in actual murders, murders, excuse me. The second would be when we actually began the implementation of our program in 2022. We brought that down to four in our targeted area, and in 2023 would have been one. We are trying to get to here, where is guiding our children and young adults to a place of peace, living productive lives. At the top, you can see the children joining us at the Goose Park. At the top right, that would be our football team, that's the Vision League, that also accompanied us at three parades, one being the Beaver Dell Parade. And at the top, or excuse me, bottom left or right, would have been the three on three tournament that we brought all of our participants to, just to give them a different scope and take them from the area that they were in. And that three on three tournament was actually on the east side, in the area that's in need of our service. It actually is in your area. We went over there to address a shooting that happened right in front of that particular All right, experience makes mindsets. A big motivation to change mindsets of at-risk youth are providing new experiences and positive Yes, please. You can see at the first picture, that was that was us taking our kids to the driving range. A lot of our kids have never had the experience of doing anything outside of playing video games and watching TV, so we like to take them to experience new things to broaden their mind. The second picture is where we took them bowling. A lot of them, believe it or not, have never been bowling. The third picture is the three, or excuse me, 4D experience at the movie theater. That whole role is our children. And the last one is where we took them boating, just to free their mind and just give them All right, and the reason why we focused on those particular kids is because when they were around our community, we noticed that they were the little brothers and sisters and nieces and nephews of our high at risk, and we identified the need to stop that, what I call the exchange point, when the older individuals are actually passing down the bad behavior to the younger individuals. And we would have. We would have conversations with the younger youth, and they would explain that their uncles or their older brothers have guns and have been in jail, and that they were thinking about doing the same thing. So we had to get in front of that. And we do that by showing them community love. Community love makes the high-at-risk and at-risk feel a part of something. If they don't feel a part of something positive, they will find negativity. How would this happen? It will actually take instilling a sense of self-esteem. If one doesn't have self-love, it is impossible to show love or compassion to others. It is one of the root causes of violence on a large scale in our community.
It's also going to take a comprehensive plan. And here's where Creative Visions is ideal in incorporating all of these entities. As we've been doing this work for 28 years, Akel has laid a foundation for this program to collaborate with the Des Moines Public Schools, the Des Moines Police Department. We work with retired attorneys who want to do a legal clinic so they can advise some of the participants in our program. The medical, as gun violence is considered a public health issue, hospitals are now putting emphasis on gun violence as a health epidemic. So as they do intakes, they're asking questions now that pertain to, do you feel safe in your home? Are you have access to weapons? And is there a need for safety in the home? So this ideal of galvanizing the community to put eyes on the problem is where community engagement with Creative Visions is strengthening the program. In our program, the VIPs, which are Violence Intervention Production Team, they develop the public education. And we create that material to reach and educate the community in whole. So this would be your teachers, your coaches, parents, barbers, anyone that deals with kids that may hear conversations, can identify words that would mean something different than normally intended. The VIPs participate in gun safety collaborations. Our most recent collaborator is the Everytown Group, and we're working with them to get safety education about guns to the community. The VIPs are present in Des Moines Public Schools and Libraries. We work with the Let's Talk Program. So select VIPs have received training and certification, and they will dedicate four hours on three days a week between three designated middle schools to address conflicts and mediate conflicts that are happening in school. This is really important because it also gets us engaged with them so they can share about incidences that may not be happening in schools. And the libraries have also become a very good collaborator and ambassador for us because they actually see these kids on a regular basis and they get a lot of information. So that's important for our program. Our VIPs bridge cultural gaps. So here, we had an international visitors program where the Czech Republic visited Creative Visions because they wanted to duplicate the types of services that we provide in their own countries. We work with the Hispanic community. And the gentleman in the picture standing behind Akel is what, Sutinese?
Sutinese.
From the Sutis. And then the librarian community behind Ms. Ruth Ann. The VIPs educate and tutor the at-risk participants. So we had Tutor Tuesdays throughout the summer where we would feed the young people that would come in and provide tutor and an opportunity for them to just stay engaged with their academic goals. We promote community engagement because we know that we cannot boil the ocean alone. It's going to take a village. So here you have slides showing that we engage with, we partner with the Salvation Army and participated in the Christmas in July. Officer Stephanie Swartz is really big supporter of our program, and she's part of that three-on-three program on the east side. And here we were supporting a very important issue in front of the state capitol. Just some more photos of us engaging with the community. Our community ambassadors are very important because these are organizations that will add components to a comprehensive plan that may not come directly for Creative Visions. So you have Platinum Cuts, who's to the top left. You have Sundoes, that is a fashion organization that will provide clothing. Focus, they work in Ankeny, and they do similar work. They've collaborated with us on some training, human trafficking training, to get our staff better equipped to deal with issues that we may encounter. Life Juices, that's healthy foods. ICC Counseling, Urban Dreams, and 515 Exclusive. This is an organization that recognizes that young people need to have a sense of pride in how they look, especially on first days of school, proms, and things of that nature. So they provide high-end clothing for our participants. And then we also have the Creative Visions Wraparound Services, which will detail the components of a comprehensive plan that we provide right out of Creative Visions.
My name is April Wells. I direct the Crime Victims Advocacy Program at Creative Visions. And just going to give a little overview of our wraparound services that we have. So addressing basic needs is one of the main things that we do at Creative Visions. With the VIP program, we want to not only address the most basic needs, the immediate needs, but also help with the long-term needs as well. So food is one of the main things in our community. We see that, you know, this particular community is food insecure. It could lead to a lot of issues. And so we do have a full food pantry, a full-functioning food pantry with meats, with vegetables, with all the staples that one would need. And all of our clients are able to access this food so that they are not food insecure as they would be. We also have implemented the My Purpose, a Second Chance Initiative, which is in partnership with Reform. Reform is an organization that was started, I think, with rapper Meek Mill and Jay-Z, Kim Kardashian, to name a few of those that have come together. They identified 15 states that were needing, in their eyes, some reform to their probation and parole services. And for example, Meek Mill, I think, had been violated from popping a wheelie on his motorcycle or something like that. They were able to identify places where, you know, violate, people were being violated over kind of silly stuff and being locked back up. So they created this organization, and we are able to help with that with the My Purpose and Second Chance Initiative. It aims to transform probation and parole by changing law systems and culture to create real pathways to work and well-being. This project also helps individuals meet and complete their community service and probation slash parole requirements. Moving on to my program, the Crime Victims Advocacy Program. This program helps and works hand-in-hand with the Violence Interruption Programs as we are able to help the victims of violent crimes basically restore their lives. And this work has been really great because with Creative Visions, the 28-year history, that's been the core of what Akel has set the foundation of and Ms. Ivette has set the foundation of helping prevent violence and at the same time, help the victims of the violent crimes and their families be able to get back on their feet. This would include things such as help with employment, help with getting people back on their feet as far as signing up for a college, taking college courses, helping with housing and utilities when that's necessary. Also, attending court and being a support with court cases, helping write victim impact statements, and just a myriad of things. Whatever the victims need, we are there to help with. If we cannot do it in-house, we have a lot of different partnerships, and we will refer people in terms of mental health referrals with Broadlines as one of our partners with that. But we really just seek to help our victims in every aspect, to support them, make them stronger, and to go from victim to survivorship. Vicarious trauma. In doing this work, I'm sure you can imagine there, you know, is vicarious trauma with this, dealing with violence, dealing with victims each and every day. It's, can be very heavy work. And so we are happy to be here and doing it. But with that, we need to take care of ourselves, and we need to practice the things that we tell our, those clients that we work with, we tell them to be, take care of themselves and to practice self-care so that, so we also need to do that ourselves. In this particular photo, this young lady is Tasha Burrell. She's wonderful. We recommend her to everyone. She is an awesome masseuse. She also produces some of those oils she makes herself to do what she does. She has heavenly hands, and she's been able to provide, provide for us and our clients massages, okay? And she does, she's very good at what she does. And she chose us, actually. She, she had started a heroes program, and she chose us to be the first recipients of that, knowing the work that we have done in the community, knowing how taxing it can be. And she comes in just to provide like a sanctuary and, you know, a place for us to not think about all of the trauma that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, which can restore and renew us and, you know, help us to get back in there and continue doing the good work that we do. At this time, Akel, if there's anything you would like to add to the presentation.
Just quickly, one of the things that you look at is a holistic approach. When we took on this project, we had to look at, you know, where do we begin? You know, how do we make it work? One of the things that, when Tim showed the young people, you know, in the very beginning, you know, we were looking at, of course, that age group, the shooters themselves. Then we started noticing these young kids that were out 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. You know, when you're looking at kids at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning at that age group, you got to start questioning, what are you doing out there? You know? And then you start finding out, like Tim said, they're related to the shooters that we're talking about. And Ivette asked one of the young men in one of our sessions, like, have you ever seen someone with a gun? And every last one of them raised their hand. You know, one of them looked at and said, you know, well, my brother, you know, and my cousin, they all have guns. We said, well, how old are they? They were 15 and 16 years old. You know? So we had to now start relating these young people with, thought this was glamorous, you know, because these individuals were running around. So we had to show them a different part of life. That's why we took them boating. That's why we took them to the golf cart, to show them a different part of life. This is where you eat at. You know, you don't have to go through a drive-thru because you can't walk in because you're carrying a weapon. You know, those type of things. You know, that's why we focused the Reform Program, you know, as you look at statistics, was the fact that even though you lock someone up and they come out, that doesn't mean the mindset has changed. You know, some individuals are locked up and come out, are better criminals once they come out again, you know? And that's not, you know, that's a reality. So we have to get to these individuals when they come out the door to say, hey, these are your children, you know, that your brothers and sisters, you don't want them to be locked up, too. And you got to change it. So we got to be able to offer them something. You know, we got to give them a new life. Because once you come out the institution, if you don't have resources for individuals coming out, then what are they going to resort to? Back to what happened when they went back in. So this is where our focus is at, you know? And so, you know, we can show you. We could have shown you, you know, guns and young people guns and different things of that, which I'm hoping that down the road, we'll be able to do that. But one of the things that has come out, you know, in the space in the last month, is, you know, pictures and everything out, you know, that we've seen on television, where we have children, and I call them children, we all do, that are 16, 17, 15 years old that have weapons, you know? And we're not talking about weapons like a pea shooter. You know, we're talking about weapons like, you know, AR-15s, that they're taking pictures and taking it on Snapchat and the other medias that they're holding and they're pointing. The thing with that as I close is that these individuals are not on 60 Minutes. They're not on NBC. They're in Des Moines, Iowa. They're in these zones. These individuals are not, you know, someone that you would see an expose, you know, that Connie Chung or somebody would do. This is right here in Des Moines. This is in each one of our neighborhoods that we're looking at these young people. And that's why your investment has helped us approach it holistically, you know, and develop and go into a comprehensive move to be able to address these issues. You know, these are our babies, but we have to do this plan to be able to do it. We didn't get here overnight, and it's going to take us time to resolve this issue. But we have made a serious step in the right direction in reducing that. And we did it in a short period of time, you know? So you give us a longer period of time, you know, we'll make it happen, you know? And just to clear, we will not cure violence. We can't cure it. But we'll sure reduce it in our community because Des Moines is savable, and we believe that wholeheartedly. You have any questions?
Mayor and Council, if I could, I appreciate the presentation. One of the challenges we had in preparing for this presentation is in understanding that, obviously, it's for the public's benefit as well as your own, that a lot of this information is very sensitive and private. And so those conversations, I am going to set up times individually with you to come in and have Akel and Ivette and Tim be able to talk about specific cases where the value of having the VIP program in place truly does prevent additional violence, gun violence. I'm absolutely convinced of that with the multiple incidents that because they were on scene and able to interrupt additional violence, the numbers are playing out in a more advantageous way. So again, it's sensitive information, it's private information, and I will be setting those times up with you to hear that one-on-one.
I understand and appreciate the challenges of trying to have data on something that didn't happen. That's, that's hard to do. I've, I heard that you've made, or someone on the team has made a stopper to at Meyer Hall. And can you tell us about that?
Yes. Our team, every Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:00, we visit Meyer Hall, the juvenile detention center. It's usually about 10 people to each pod, three pods, so that way we send three of our team members to go and talk to them weekly. The reason why we chose that approach is because we recognize that the demographic of people who are actually carrying the guns is getting younger and younger and younger. So the best way that we can actually get a hold of their brains before they get acclimated back into society is in a juvenile facility. So we go up there weekly, we bring food to them, so that way they can experience food that they don't get in their while we're getting a chance to focus their brain in the right direction. And it's actually been really, really effective. I run into them constantly when I'm out and about. I just ran into one yesterday at Walmart who came up to me and was like, this is my girlfriend, I'm about to have a baby, and I thank you, I just got enrolled in college. They told me soon as I turn 18, I can enroll in college, and thank you. And so that's the reason why we actually do that at Meyer Hall, because it actually produces results before they even get into the streets. And a lot of the times, they are also the older brothers and sisters of some of the younger individuals that we deal with also.
And one, I think...
No, I was going to say, it also gives the team a unique opportunity to find things out about the family dynamic of the individuals that are locked up. Sometimes you look deep into the lifestyles and the home life of these kids, and you have to have some degree of compassion to understand why, what landed them where they are. And sometimes, in many cases, the crime that they're locked up was done to prevent crimes that were happening to them. So, you know, it's just a... So, you know, it's just a spiraling cycle, but we are able to give these kids a platform to where they can tell their stories and feel some degree of compassion, which is very unique to what they experience because of some of the choices they make. They're always being told, you know, what they're doing wrong. So to have this organization be able to see value in them is really important because that instilling self-esteem is really critical. If I don't, if a person doesn't think very much of themselves, they're not going to be a productive citizen. So we want to let them know that they are valued human beings.
And the key is, we go back, we got to catch them. We got to catch them when we have the opportunity to get a hold of them before they get back to the street. You know, you get back to the street, we're in competition with those individuals that have made it look glamorous on this end. So we got to get them right when we get them, we get a cap there and it's proven to be very, you know, successful for us, especially coming in. Also want to quickly say that, and that's because he's here and he looks younger because of the suit he has on, but the police chief, they, you know, got to commend him and his, and his crew because we've been able to work closer with the police, you know, on this, on, on a certain perspective. We had an incident where individuals actually ran into Creative Visions. There was a shooting that took place and the police came, we were able to work together, we'd get these individuals situated, you know, come in. But the key was that these individuals who ran into Creative Visions, ran in, were part of the VIP program. But the other thing is, they hit the door, said, we had to come somewhere where it was safe. You know, that was all right. And then the police came in, you know, and they took them all to the car and the police and us that could work with them openly, we did. We worked together, we were able to resolve an issue and it prevented anything from going on. Now, we're not going to say our young people ran in and were safe, was totally innocent, but the point was, it prevented any shooting that took place. That, that's the key with the VIP program. It prevented any escalation of shooting when individuals that were driving, especially their parent was talking about shooting one of the kids. That makes the difference. That's what you have invested in and we've been able to stop that. Any other questions?
Can I touch on something? One thing too, I just want to make evident is not all of the people that we deal with are innocent. So there are a lot of our participants that come to us and we help them turn themselves in so that way they can actually own up to their accountability because some people just clearly did something wrong. And so if there are participants, like for example, there was one, two weeks ago, that we actually went and helped them turn themselves in at court. He's doing about six months now, it was hard to get him there, but you got to be accountable for your actions. So it's not just a save everybody thing either, it's do what's right. So if it's a situation where they did something wrong, we also assist them on that end also.
I just wanted to bring back, when you bring up the juvenile court, when I was, it worked at Polk County, the mailroom, the art these kids did on their envelopes that they mailed home was incredible. So I would encourage you to get them into the art, I mean, the talent. And even from the jail, the artwork you would get that they would put on their envelopes is so another avenue of, of an activity they could do all the time is to encourage the artistic aspect of what they have inside them.
Thank you for that. We, we have an after-school program that we're developing. We hope to have that kicking off by November 5th. And they will be doing crafts in that and also learning some engineering and production through our Academic Achievement Center and Studio. So we definitely have the, the arts in mind as implementing that to the program.
One of the things in closing.
I just wanted to say thanks for being at Martin Luther King Jr. Park this summer. I spend every Thursday over there when they did the three-on-three basketball. Police had set up and they did a great job. You were there, just having your, there, I think everybody felt.
And Kisha Barnes at Wee School, she's also considered a community ambassador. We know that the South Side needs a lot of attention. We're not, we'd love to be everywhere, but she definitely is what we consider an ambassador and an inroad because she can let us know any concerns that she has so we can follow up and address and make sure that it's not interrelated. We'd love to expand to be all over Des Moines.
And we have touched in your area, so really don't want you to feel left out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. One, one, just in closing, why don't you think of something that you have invested into a program, you invest in it, it has made a transformation, you know, without a doubt. You know, that collar pillar is definitely turned into a butterfly, you know? And we're taking children and helping make that transformation with this investment. Look at it that way. Because you know, every, every animal doesn't make a full transformation. They stop at a certain point. We've been able to take these young people, these human beings, these individuals that a lot of people have counted out, to help make that transformation. And we are producing butterflies now, you know? That's why they're in Graves Lake on the paddle boat and not running on the street with a gun in their hand. You know, that's why they're on the golf course hitting and doing some putting and they're not out at 3:00 o'clock in the morning with the cousin, the brother, anything, talking about, you got to earn now and put some work in. We're making that transformation and you've been able to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last, two minutes, just to summarize and I hope I'm.
As young people always, you, I always got to close with some music. Yeah, you can't do, you can't do it without the music, you know? And see, that's, that's why they brought me up because I was supposed to carry it on so we could then hit the music and close it out.[1603.15]